Alderman Boy. Alderman Cone. Commissioner Benton. Commissioner Boas.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Peoples. Commissioner Peoples. Commissioner Goodman.
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Pfeffer. Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Judge Rother.
We're getting a lot of feedback.
We're getting a lot of feedback.
Are you still hearing the feedback, Commissioner Bradley? Commissioner Peoples, are you, are you present? Obviously, technical difficulties always, so we'll just work through them for a second. It's just good to be out and see people in real life or change, sitting in chairs.
Denise, if you're on mute, or if you're on your phone, can you unmute using star six, please?
Present.
You are unmuted.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Is that better?
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
And you have a call.
Thank you. Denise, if you don't mind just using your mute on the phone itself.
Okay, put it back on mute.
Just your regular mute.
Regular mute.
More accessible.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Would acknowledge the staff of the St. Louis City, Cecilia, and who else is here? Don, Alexis.
Mr. Chairman, I can't hear you.
Thank you very much. I'll see if this is any better at this point.
Yes, sir, it is. Thank you.
We'll be sure to check. I have Jake sitting next to me, so, you know, I'll show the mic appropriately. Before we get started in the approval minutes, I simply want to invite the acting CEO of our host here to come and just greet us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out. It is a pleasure to have you here. You are welcome here, whether it is for this meeting or for others. And just want to also acknowledge and thank the Planning Commission for choosing to have the meeting in the Deaconess Center for Child Wellbeing. We are excited for the reasons that we're here today to talk about, among the other things on your agenda, the North Central Plan, and just look forward to the meeting and many of the people here who've worked extremely hard to bring this plan together and can truly say is the People's Plan. And again, thank you, and we look forward to the meeting.
Thank you for hosting us. We appreciate it. At this point, I need a, the minutes have been received by the commission. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as they were printed.
So moved. Zack and Bradley.
I heard a move by Commissioner Weber and a second by Commissioner Bradley. Roll call, please.
Alderman Boy. Commissioner Benton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
You'll need to unmute at this time, if you would, Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Judge Rother.
Aye.
And the motion passes without a present voting. Aye. Commissioner Pfeffer.
All right, with that, the minutes approved from June 9th to 2021. This evening, we have a, a public hearing. At this point, what we will do is we'll have the presentation, then I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. We'll give the instructions at that time of how we'll entertain the questions from both members, online members present and members on the phone, if any. And then, at that point, we'll close the public hearing, and the commission will then move forward with its action at that point. So I will, at this point, invite Alexa up to give us an introduction to the, to the presentation.
All right, so, good evening, members of the Planning Commission, residents, supporters of the Van de Venner Covenant Blue Grand Center neighborhoods, and all of those visiting us virtually. My name is Alexa Seda, and I'm a senior planner with the Cities Planning Urban Design Agency. And I want to take this moment to thank the Deaconess Center for Child Wellbeing for hosting our planning commission this evening. Tonight, as many of you know, we are here to consider the adoption of the North Central Vision Action Plan as a topical plan for the Van de Venner and Covenant Blue Grand Center neighborhood. But before we begin, please let me guide you through the order of events, which Chair Strata has done. But if you take a look at the screen, we will follow after I kind of just introduced myself. We will have Tim Brien of H3 Studios present on the North Central Vision Action Plan, followed by opening the public hearing from the Planning Commission. We'll have public testimony heard in the order of in-person, online, and on those who have joined us by phone. We'll close the public hearing, have Planning Commission discussion and questions, and then I will present Resolution Number 16-21, which is to consider the adoption as, consider the plan as a topical plan. Next slide, please. And without further ado, I'm going to introduce Tim to come speak on the North Central Vision Action Plan.
Thank you, everyone. It's great to be with you presenting tonight at the end of a long process. As Alexa mentioned, my name is Tim Brihan. I'm a principal with H3 Studio. And we, along with Vector Communications and Action St. Louis, comprise the planning team that worked with the community and the Deaconess Foundation to develop the North Central Plan. Next slide, please. So what we'd like to do tonight, we presented to you back in June at the request for public hearing, an overview of the planning process. And so what we'd like to do, to do for you tonight is to present a summary of the outcomes of the plan and the major recommendations. That includes the community vision goals and strategies, a discussion of the urban design focus areas outlined in the plan, and the implementation plan. And we'll conclude with a summary of the community partner endorsements that have been received on the plan.
Could you please speak up?
Sure. Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay. Next slide, please. Next. So, as we had mentioned at the June meeting, the North Central Plan, the, the, the North Central Community Vision Action Plan is a partnership between the North Central Community, the Deaconess Foundation, and the UCC Church Building and Loan Fund. This process was commenced in 2019 when a consortium of community residents approached the Deaconess Foundation to discuss a partnership to update the original North Central Plan that was developed in 2000. And from that initial outreach, a community steering committee was formed with the community partners that you see listed on the slide. And the project was funded by the, the two funding partners, the Deaconess Foundation and the UCC Church Building and Loan Fund. And this process took place over about a 12-month period with engagement with the steering committee and the neighborhood at large to develop a community-based vision-action plan for the two neighborhoods comprising the North Central area, the Covenant Blue Grand Center Neighborhood and the Van de Venner Neighborhood. Next, please. Through this process, we, we utilize what we call a SOAR Planning Process: strengths, opportunities, assets, and results. And this really framed out the way in which we both gathered and analyzed feedback from the community as well as the existing conditions on the ground. And through this process, a number of strengths, opportunities, and aspirations were articulated by community residents, which all built toward the development of the vision values and goals for the project. Next, please. So, to begin with, the, the plan is rooted in a community vision statement, which states, "By 2040, the North Central Community will be a whole, healthy, and vibrant community comprised of distinctive neighborhoods, housing, and cultural, religious, and educational amenities. A North Central will be a well-maintained, safe, and inclusive home for all residents, businesses, and institutions. Centrally located and well-connected to all areas of the city and region, residents of North Central will have physical and organizational access to jobs, education, healthcare facilities, businesses, and other key amenities to ensure an excellent quality of life. Led by the people who call North Central home, the community will provide equal support and assist residents and stakeholders to thrive and chart their own future, this generation, the next." And the overall plan was developed with three planning principles: equity at the center, the, the, the plan is rooted in the value that all people deserve dignity, respect, and an equal opportunity to have an excellent quality of life; asset-based revitalization, the idea that successful implementation must build upon existing strengths; and finally, holistic sustainability. Triple bottom line sustainability is the benchmark by which the North Central Plan is conceived. And it's woven throughout the plan and every initiative that's presented in order to achieve holistic, authentic, authentic, and long-term sustainability. Next, please. That vision statement, which was developed in conjunction with the community, really deals with three key themes: place, people, and organization. And those formed the three revitalization principles of the plan, which begin to orchestrate the plan goals. So revitalization principle number one: to build a whole, healthy, and vibrant community that is supported by the first four goals. Goal number one: respect, celebrate, and build upon the diverse history of North Central. Goal two: create whole, healthy, and vibrant neighborhoods. Goal three: rehab existing homes and provide a diversity of new infill homes. And goal four: promote and support the creation and retention of viable community businesses and creative arts industries, and promote entrepreneurship. Principle number two: people. Empower residents to achieve an excellent quality of life. This is supported by five goals. Goal five: improve neighborhood safety for all residents and visitors. Goal six: support and assist North Central residents to remain in place and build wealth and social capital. Goal seven: connect and engage residents of all ages to sustainable employment and community services. Goal eight: attract and provide access to high-quality recreational, educational, health, and cultural amenities and programs. And goal nine: improve and enhance public infrastructure and public services. And finally, the third revitalization principle: organize for successful, equitable, and long-term implementation that is supported by three goals. Goal 10: establish clear communication and accountability with the city of St. Louis. Goal 11: create a participatory decision-making process for residents to guide the future of the community. And finally, goal 12: ensure a just, equitable, inclusive, resilient, and sustainable future for the North Central Community. Next, please. Those 12 goals are supported by 58 measurable community development strategies and over 215 specific action items. And this is an important point to keep in mind because it's, it was very important throughout this planning process that the, that the plan be actionable at a variety of levels and by a variety of, of community partners and stakeholders. We, we recognize, and the community recognizes, that this is not a plan that, that the community can rely on a single implementer, be it the city or someone else, to achieve. It's really a plan of and for the community. And these strategies and action items create a toolkit, which we call the Community Action Plan, that is designed to democratize development and facilitate multiple partners working for implementation. And in fact, this, this is really structured to make sure that even community residents or local partners can, can find aspects of this plan on, on which to work to bring its implementation to reality. Next, please. The, the goals, strategies, and actions also form the basis of the 10 urban design focus areas within the plan. So I'll go through those now one by one, because these really comprise the, the main physical initiatives of the plan, supported by specific programmatic and, and, and operational initiatives. Focus area number one is to partner with and leverage institutional anchors. North Central has a number of very important community-based institutions located in and around it, and these provide a valuable resource for long-term community vitality and implementation of the plan. Examples of partnering and, and relationships with those anchors can include things like working with Rank and Technical College to improve enrollment and participation, working with Trans Center on community arts projects, public arts projects, and partnering with area churches to expand access to community assistance programs. Those are but a few examples. But one of the important items that came out of the planning process early on was, was working with these key institutions and, and really forging a, a relationship that makes these institutions a, a, a key, key part of, of the, of the community. Next, please. Focus area number two is to grow the Grand Center Arts District. This is probably the most regionally identifiable aspect of the North Central Planning Area. But over time, as Grand Center has developed, it's developed as sort of an island surrounded by a lot of underdeveloped land, which, which serves to separate the core of Grand Center from the surrounding neighborhoods. The plan has a number of recommendations for infill development in some of these, and redevelopment in these underdeveloped areas that will serve not only to enhance and revitalize the Covenant Blue and Van de Venner neighborhoods, but also to connect Grand Center to the established residential neighborhoods of the Central West End and, and Grand Center, and, and Midtown, rather, which, which will begin to knit these, these various areas together and, and, and provide a, a greater degree of, of connectivity and, and urban fabric in areas that are currently underdeveloped. Next, please. Focus area number three is to create a wellness district around Cochran VA Medical Center. Access to health resources and other community services is, was one of the most significant needs that was identified by residents in the planning process. And increasingly, there is a recognition that looking at health resources through a collective impact model, where not only are access to health, specific healthcare centers provided, but also opportunities for healthy and active living, high-quality, healthy housing, outdoor recreational activities, green space, et cetera, work to holistically improve health outcomes and quality of life in communities. And the, again, North Central, the North Central area is really blessed by a number of key resources, not only the VA Medical Center, but also the St. Louis Housing Authority, St. Louis Public Schools, key, key religious institutions like in this specific area, the, the Rock Church. And so beginning to think of how these different organizations can work together to provide resources that build toward and support those quality of life and, and health, health, positive health outcomes is very important. And, and current initiatives going on like the, like the Veterans Community Project on, just north on, on Aldine are, are a great example of, of how this can begin to work. Next, please. Focus area four: infill and strengthen community shopping centers. So another one of the key revitalization opportunities is providing access to high-quality day-to-day shopping opportunities and amenities. And there are currently two fairly large-scale commercial shopping centers in the area, the Lindell Marketplace and, and MLK Plaza. And so strengthening both of those, in the case of MLK Plaza, with, with an expansion of that into some of the, the underutilized and, and undesirable land uses north of, of MLK, creating a, a major node at the corner of MLK and Grand Boulevard. And in terms of Lindell Marketplace, providing a, a, a much better connection from, along North Sarah south to that, to that amenity are, are the, the components of focus area number four. Next, please. Focus area number five: establish a neighborhood center around enhanced community amenities. The, the North Sarah Project is probably one of the most recognizable initiatives that came out of the original North Central Plan. And the, the current North Central Vision Action Plan seeks to continue to build upon that energy with, with additional infill and public realm improvements along North, North Sarah, Van de Venner, and some of the cross streets, utilizing some key vacant or, or underutilized areas of land for new park development, expansion of Turner Park, the potential redevelopment of Stevens Elementary School, either as a park or a community center. And again, then looking at incremental mixed use and residential infill development along key streets, supported by streetscape improvements. Next, please. Focus area number six: revitalize Delmar as a residential boulevard and linear park. Throughout the process, we heard a lot of, a lot of input from neighborhood residents about the, the historical and cultural context of Delmar, particularly in its, in the past, as it connected Grand Center to the, to Gaslight Square. And, and ways in which that, that history and that, that cultural importance could be, could be highlighted and celebrated and brought forth in the plan. And so, the, the, the vision for Delmar Boulevard looks at creating a, a great residential boulevard west of Spring, and then creating a linear park between Enright Avenue and Delmar that crosses Grand in, between Powell Hall and the St. Louis Housing Authority to the north, in creating a significant public art opportunities, outdoor green space, and community beautification, and really setting up a series of, of gateways to improve the ident, the identity of this district and, and, and provide exemplary places for, for people to hang out and recreate. Number seven: build small residential parks as a framework for new infill housing. So one of the interesting elements that was in the original North Central Plan was a very expansive network of parks, which unfortunately, due to their scope, were very difficult to develop, which is one of the reasons why they never were developed. Through this process, we wanted to take that idea forward, and that idea was something that residents were very, very enthusiastic about and felt was very important. And we wanted to do it in a way that was much more achievable on an incremental basis. And so, we have identified expansion opportunities or opportunities for the development of at least five new small residential parks within the, within the two neighborhoods. These utilize existing areas of vacant land and would be supported by new infill housing developments surrounding them. And these, these would be envisioned to be coordinated with the city, but in most cases, developed independently as part of, as part of infill housing or mixed-use developments by private developers. And of course, you know, these are examples of, of ways in which these parks could be, could be located, but it certainly is not exhaustive. But the idea that, that, that utilizing existing vacant land in a, in a very coordinated way to begin to frame out existing development and provide various areas throughout the neighborhood for residents to gather is, is very important. Number eight: develop Dr. MLK Drive and connect North to the Ville. While MLK faces numerous challenges, there are a number of important assets, including some new redevelopment opportunities that have occurred recently, as well as a regional focus on the corridor through the equitable economic development framework. A significant section of this corridor, of course, runs through the North Central Planning Area. And there is, in particular, one very significant site, the Killark Electric Site, which is located between North Sarah and North Van de Venner. This is a, basically, a one-block site that is currently vacant. And we, we've worked through with the community and with other community stakeholders a, a series of options for potential futures for that site, including a significant 14-acre recreational park, redevelopment of the existing building as a community arts center, or redevelopment of the whole site as a, as a high-tech innovation campus. All of these would, would build upon and support initiatives of other, of other citywide planning initiatives, including the equitable economic development framework. Focus area number nine: infill new housing along the Hodieamont Greenway Linear Park. As you all know, Hodieamont Greenway is a major current initiative of GRG, and it provides a really great opportunity for a mid-block frontage that can support a, 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 a new, new diversity of housing types in, in North Central through the development of what are called auxiliary.
My computer.
Auxiliary.
So I'm inside.
Or, you know, granny flats or things like that. And so, thinking of that Greenway as a major park amenity, again, looking at, at opportunities with vacant sites along the Greenway to develop some major trailhead amenities, and then infilling and, and, and providing the ability for, for individual property owners to build ADUs along that, along that Greenway as a way of, to both generate wealth for, for property owners in the neighborhood, and also to provide just a, a, a great urban environment and, and a, a different urban environment that is found in other parts of the city along Hodieamont Greenway is a major opportunity. And then finally, focus area number 10: rehab and infill neighborhood housing with a variety of house types on safe, beautiful streets. So, we recognize that even though there are a number of larger initiatives within this plan, physical redevelopment of North Central is really going to hinge on, on, on incremental lot-by-lot redevelopment and, and revitalization. And so, the, the plan outlines a strategic approach to incremental infill over time. It, it's designed to build upon the neighborhood's existing housing stock, maintain housing affordability through a variety of housing types, and provide high-quality housing opportunities for all households. And it does that by taking a very contextual approach, by looking at and, and keying a different type, different housing types to different streets based on the existing character. And so those, those items are provided in detail in the plan. It's, it essentially functions as a menu of, of redevelopment or revitalization opportunities, street by street, and is designed, again, to guide future development in the, in the neighborhood in a way that supports the community's vision and, and builds, builds toward the overall vision of the plan. And so, on the next slide, then you can see the, the overall composite community urban design plan for the North Central area. Finally, I'd like to touch briefly on the implementation plan. So, implementation is very important, and we wanted to ensure that the, that this plan was structured in a way that facilitates implementation, again, through a variety of, of, of means and a variety of resources. This is done through the Community Action Plan, which is part of the planning document. Again, I mentioned that previously, but this is the catalog of all 215 action items, which, which provides a, a pretty specific roadmap of, of, of steps that residents, community partners, agencies, et cetera. et cetera, can take to begin to implement the strategies and goals of the plan. And we also worked with the community to identify a series of early action items that can really get implementation kicked off to a good start. And so there are five early action items that we want to, that we believe should be pursued. Number one, establish a new North Central Implementation Steering Committee to provide a forum for community, a continued community engagement. The Planning Steering Committee was a great success, and keeping that model going through implementation is a very valuable resource. And number two, building community capacity by establishing a community-based development organization, a CBDO, and other community-based organizations to guide and facilitate implementation. So this is very important because a plan like this needs a champion and a plan holder that can work day in and day out on moving implementation of the plan forward. So building that community capacity in those organizations is critical. Number three, achieving adoption of the plan by the City of St. Louis is a topical plan. We are engaged in that right now, which is wonderful. Four, establish an ongoing outcome reporting and management system to track progress and implementation of the plan. And finally, one of the key physical improvements that came out of the community engagement process was to establish a community-based wireless mesh broadband network in the North Central neighborhoods to provide free or very low-cost internet access and smart community infrastructure to all residents. Finally, I'd like to just conclude the presentation tonight with a list of the community partner endorsements. We are very proud of this. The Deaconess Foundation is understandably very proud of this. There were a number of community organizations that were involved in this planning process, either directly on the steering committee or in other ways as major stakeholders operating in and around this area. And 18 of those community partners and stakeholders have provided statements of endorsement of the North Central Planning Process and statements of support. That includes the three alderpersons, as well as all of the organizations that you see here on the slide. West Bell Place Association, Scruggs CME Church, Greater Union Missionary Baptist Church, St. Louis Housing Authority, La Place Enrichment Center, Covenant Blue Grand Center Neighborhood Association, Grand Center, Inc., GRG, Third Baptist Church, Aim Development Group, The Rock Church, Big Muddy, Contemporary Art Museum, Windsor Transitional Housing, and the UCC Church Building and Loan Fund. So again, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I think it's a testament to the enthusiasm, the thoughtfulness in the engagement of the community that these organizations believe that this planning process really did represent the community's vision and input, and that they were willing to offer their official endorsements of this process. So with that, I'd like to conclude the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. As we get ready to call for a public hearing, let me first acknowledge the fact that in the packets, there are three letters of signed endorsements, as he mentioned, both by Alderwoman Evans from the Fourth, Alderwoman Davis from the 19th, and Alderwoman Knight from the 18th. All letters are in the file at this time, so we appreciate that. I will say also, the hard work was done by those in the community. As much as you have organizations doing all the legwork, you all did the hard work, and I commend you on standing here and participating in that process. And I also want to acknowledge one of their partners, who, Vector Communications, who put together the plan and process that we have. So thank you for putting that together. As you see, Jake and I have been flipping through it the whole time, and I'm sure other commissioners are doing that also in their place. So thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion for public hearing. What we will do at this point is we, there are those that have signed up at this point for public hearing, I'll call you by name. Please step to the mic. At that time, we'll ask that you remove your mask so that you can be heard. Keep your comments as we ask, about two minutes if you would. I have, there's two people, I think, three. Are there any preachers in the house? I'm not going to call you at that point. And then we'll go to those that may be online and those that may be on the phone. After that, we'll close the public hearing, then we'll, I'll call Tim back to entertain any questions that arise from the commission at that point. So I'll entertain a motion for public hearing.
So moved.
It was moved by Commissioner Banton, seconded by Commissioner Weber. Call for vote. Call for previous role. Call for previous role. Do I hear any objections? Hearing no objections. The community, at this point, the public hearing is open. If I can have the first name or names?
First name is Reverend Rodney J. Oliver.
Now I know why they left.
Good evening to everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Father Rodney O'Leary, I'm associate pastor at The Rock Church. The Rock Church supports the plan because it speaks to probably what I consider the most key element of any kind of development plan. It provides real hope to the people who live here. Because without real hope, all of this is just a lot of nice words that the people here have heard for 21 years. And people need real hope, hope that this isn't just a lot of nice, pretty pictures. Because it's, the plan speaks to the need for employment opportunities for the unemployed. And something as simple as day work, you can open up a job center, somebody who needs a job at least a day, there's plenty of things that can be done every day. And you give men and women an opportunity, it promotes their human dignity, because they're not getting a handout. They're getting actual money for services provided. That's human dignity. We want to get people to get a chance to take care of the, go for the jobs that are available. Well, these are single-parent families, and if they're going to apply for jobs, they're going to need daycare. And that's something the city needs to provide. Because you give single-parent families daycare opportunities, they can actually go get a job. Job training and retraining centers. There's plenty of unemployed folks, not even prior to the pandemic, who, they weren't laid off as the new technology has done, their jobs were downsized, which means, don't sit by the phone waiting to get called back. But we can, these are folks, everyone can get trained and retrained for existing jobs. Basic services are needed here if this plan is to actually work. Basic services are something as garbage cans for people to throw their garbage in. We hear all the time, oh, the North Side is, people don't take care of the North Side, there's garbage all over the streets. Well, if we had garbage, if people had garbage cans to put the garbage in, the garbage wouldn't be on the streets. Regular garbage pickups. Regular police patrols through our neighborhoods. Maybe this is when I was much younger, you had cops walking the beat, you had cops just patrolling around, knew the neighborhoods, and people knew the cops. What is needed here in the North Side is a police and community relations advocacy, so that we can begin to build relationships between the community and the police. One of the things we need to do, I like, one thing I like about the plan particularly, is it speaks to crossing the Delmar divide. Now, that's the one thing all of us need to. You focus on the city commission, the other different parts of the city government, as well as the community here. That's all I've heard about since I've come to The Rock. The Delmar Wall, the invisible Delmar Wall. All those theater areas, the symphony, that's never going to cross Delmar until that wall is broken down and a bridge is created. We need to make, deal with the, what's causing the high crime in this area? We can talk about putting more police on, getting the guns off the street, getting the drugs off the street, and that'll do nothing. But if we deal with what's causing the drugs and the guns, because in some cases, it's cheaper for folks to buy drugs and guns than it is to buy groceries and pay rent. We need to deal with the derelict buildings that are all over the North Side. They look ugly, and people have asked me, well, what would you do with it? Well, you find, it's not too hard to find out who owns these buildings, and most times they don't even live here in the North Side. You start finding the owners $500 a day, that's going to be a really quick incentive to do something with your property. I've seen it done in one of the big cities. You post an 11-by-17 poster of the owner of the building, that all of St. Louis City see who actually owns this building. That's an eyesore. Close down the houses of prostitution that are here. And such places should be seized by the city, property and buildings. Because I've known a number of cities here in the States that if you're running a house of prostitution, and by the way, these houses of prostitution, it's like a drive-through. They're better than fast food. You just drive through, put your money out, buy your product, and you move on. And people, I've already been told by a couple of lawyers from the church and a couple of the police officers I know, well, you know, it's really hard to do that. No, it's not. Not if there's the will and determination. Because you seize these places, and they can be seized because they're part of a criminal, ongoing criminal enterprise. They can be seized and shut down, and all it takes is one or two, and everybody else is going to understand clearly that both the government and the community is dead serious about this. And then people are going to start getting attracted, because what's going to attract business? It's going to be something more than just this incredible plan I've been reading. What's going to attract them is that there's a reason to consider this. There's job opportunities, economic opportunities, small business training for people who can open a business. You just look across the street on Grand, there are four buildings there. One of them easily could be converted into a small supermarket. Other small businesses, that would be great opportunities. But this is where this needs to be dealt with straight up front. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker?
Good evening. I have a sheet of paper, and I was going to read from it, but everyone says I do a better presentation when I make eye contact and just speak. So that's what I'm going to do. I am the co-chair of the Steering Committee for the North Central Plan, and I was reluctant to accept that position, because I knew it would be a lot of work, and it was. And I was on the phone all the time with people I'd never even met before, telling me what they wanted for this North Central Plan. Many people are aware of the years of work that it took for the original North Side community plan. Many of those people that were involved originally from 1995, and I have paperwork to prove that, they're not here anymore. They didn't live to see the fruition of their efforts, but their spirit, I mean, it was like a legend when I moved into the neighborhood back in 2004, North Central Plan, North Central Plan. We're going to do this. We had the Army Corps of Engineers come and map out the whole thing. I said, you did what? They did. And the plan was a 300-page document originally. Now, it's been prettied up and professionalized, if that's a word, and it's presented to you for your consideration, and I hope that you really, really consider how much we really, really want this. It's needed. I probably won't live long enough to see it, but there are other people that I care about in this world and in this city, and I do care about this city. St. Louis is my hometown. I want to see it grow. Before, you used to say St. Louis, and every woman would go, yay, St. Louis, you know, booze and shoes. Now you say St. Louis, and I don't know what people think. My sister was in Canada, and they asked her, where are you from? And she said, St. Louis, and they went like, that's the attitude. We have to overcome that. We can do that in small measure, in small baby steps, but we can take those steps now. We've got a plan, and if you don't try, we're going to never know if it'll work or not. But we're willing to try, and we've got enough people, and I hate to say this, but we've got enough people in this room, a lot of nudged people, they can kind of get in there and tap them on the shoulder and say, well, what do you think about this? Don't you support this, and don't you support the other?
Be sure to speak into.
I'm sorry. When we finish nudging people and getting them on our side and getting them to rally, they will come along, because nothing succeeds like success and willpower. And I think we have that. I think, I know we have it. This reiteration of the original North Central Plan exists because of the Deaconess Foundation for Child Well-being, the UCC Churching of Christ Loan and Building Fund, who offered their support to the community. When they first came, we said, who are these people? Are they for real? They're just jashing us, aren't they? They were real. They were serious. And then we said, well, if they're serious, we've got to be more serious. We've got to be for real. And we were. We divided our efforts and our contacts and our people, and we spoke among ourselves. And there are still some more people in the community that we still need to get up next to and kind of bring them into the fold. But we just, this week, we've had people approach different members of the committee because they see and they've heard about this meeting, and they're saying, they're actually going to do it. And now they want in on it, and we want them to come in on it. But you've got to approve the plan first and say that, you know, we're going to give you a chance to do it. I want to thank the three H3 Studios. We bugged them the heck. We did. Action St. Louis and poor Vector. They used to do a lot of handholding. And as far as the issue about the Y5 broadband, I am an example of a person who pays Vector a lot of money every month, and I would just cut off in the middle of a sentence. So I would approve of that. I like that idea. This all has been abetted by extensive cooperation and communication with the offices and personnel of the City Planning Commission. You all kind of kept us on the right track, you know? They kind of said like, but you helped us. You helped us stay on track, and we have goals and deadlines, and we're here today because we set a time limit for ourselves. We've got to get this done. This is the second attempt for adoption of a cohesive, community-based, and driven neighborhood development plan. This is our second try at this. 20 years ago today, there might be 20 years in the future. We're not giving up. It is a reasonable plan, a comprehensive plan, and a short, with short and long-term goals outlining what is needed in a particular section of St. Louis, which can readily be replicated across the city. If we work on this and get this to succeed, work here, work here, work over there, work in that corner over there. The NCP promotes political, educational, social, quality of life, and artistic components. It's the whole ball of wax. This NCP plan is feasible, and it's a feasible overview that can be realized. The product of this two-year effort is before the St. Louis City Planning Commission, and we hope that you consider for adoption. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Our call for our third speaker?
We have Audrey Ellerman.
That's the only person. And I have a little some timer, so I have to look at my paper. Thank you for allowing me. Okay, my name is Audrey Ellerman. I'm co-chair of the North Central Steering Committee, and I'm also the president of Covenant Blue Grand Center Neighborhood Association. It is my honor to say a few words of the importance of approving this plan for the community, especially the neighboring communities north of Delmore, the Delmore Divide. As a proud city dweller all of my life, it saddens me to see how much decay and suffering that has occurred in the African-American communities with the root cause being apathy, neglect, indifference by local government businesses, and yes, even some stakeholders in the community. That the city could literally turn a blind eye to the needs and concerns of the African community as a whole is a disgrace. My 20-year journey in the Covenant Blue Grand Center started with an American dream, a dream of owning my home for the first time. And lo and behold, what a journey it has been. First fueled with excitement, though quickly turned to unbelievable challenges from new construction problems caused by the builder ignoring issues that needed their attention to predatory banking practices and cooperative city officials ignoring the neighborhood's needs for infrastructure improvements that never should have occurred with a new development. And most importantly, the lack of an oversight committee that should have been in place to help bridge and resolve the unnecessary challenges that plagued the development. Putting this behind us in 2019, a new beginning, spirit by the partnership and the valuable relationship with the Deaconess Foundation for Child Well-Being and the Covenant Blue Grand Center Neighborhoods and Benedict Neighborhoods, conversations began about how to improve the neighborhoods. Discussions centered around assessing what happened to the original development plan, also called the North Central Plan, that was written some 20, 25 years ago. Somewhere, a draft was found and it was discovered that the plan had never been adopted by the city. And also, the development had ignored the dreams and desires of then homeowners, wishes who worked so hard to help create the original plan. After many months of workshops, discussions and presentations on a vision of what a community-led plan could look like, with the generosity of the Deaconess Foundation of Child Well-Being and the UCC Church of Christ Loan and Building Fund, a steering committee comprised of about 28 visionaries selected a design team of experienced experts, H3 Studios, Vector Communications and Action St. Louis, to create the North Central Vision Action Plan. It is a plan that has never been done in the city of St. Louis or North City, shall I say, and can be the template for future development of neighborhoods, a plan that has a community-driven, community-led every step of the way, a plan that can be the catalyst for change, well-needed and well-overdue, a change that is imperative in order for the city of St. Louis to grow and unite, the necessary development to dispel the notion of, or better said, eliminate the Delmore Divide. Black neighborhoods matter. I unequivocally endorse this plan. I thank again the Deaconess Foundation for Child Well-Being, the UCC Church of Christ Loan and Fund for listening, hearing our voices in order to start this process of change. I thank H3 Studios, Vector Communication and Action St. Louis and our Steering Committee for the extraordinary work to make this day happen. Thank you for allowing my support. We need this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are our three.
Uh, one more. I'm not sure if she wants us to read this or she just. Okay.
There is another statement that wants to be read by a participant, so I'll ask Michelle to read it out loud for the record.
No, she's going to read it out.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I missed it.
Cassandra Griffin? Yes.
Okay, please come, Cassandra Griffin.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Vector. Good afternoon, H and M and all the other committees, Audrey Ellerman and your committee. I support this plan. My name's Cassandra Griffin. I've been a resident at 3808 Windsor Place for over 14 years now. And when I moved on this street, there was a dilapidated building across the street from my home. There was a dilapidated building next door to my home. And I put in the sweat equity and the time to make the necessary calls, to have that dilapidated building across the street from me torn down, the dilapidated building next door to me torn down, and purchase those properties. There's still a large piece that I didn't purchase. I'm in favor of this neighborhood plan. Hear me clearly. I think that if we're going to have good, strong housing from real and good developers, astute and smart developers, with a sincerity and a heartfelt wishes to really develop and make good homes in this land and in this property, I'm 100% behind you. But if we're going to get low-cost developers making low-cost homes, that's going to depreciate the value, then I think we need to look at, we need to look at who our future partners will be. Not saying that's what's going to happen, I just want that to be brought out to the forefront. I work within the community and the county. I know about Land Bank. I know about the problem house next door. I know about a lot of other different things dealing with the community and dealing with building. But I also believe in generational wealth. And I think as a resident in this community, if we take the time to take a lease, cut the grass, put in the sweat equity, I think that we should be given the opportunity as a developer, as a resident, to be able to purchase that land as well. Green space can be made into a beautification area. It can be made at a dark park. It can make a senior citizens center, a senior citizens park. Green space is generational wealth and we have to quit thinking about just today. I purchased property across the street from my home, a large piece, because that's going to be my grandson's property, because he'll have something to have in his name to build his home on. What I don't appreciate is when we go through LCPA and we're told, no, you cannot buy that property because it is landmark for the developer after you've put your sweat equity in for 14 years. That's an unfair process. Give a resident a chance to actually make the investment that they're asking to make. Now, what I'm saying is I do agree with this, this, this process. I do. But I think that residents should be given the opportunities to be a developer, to make green space. Green space increases your beautification process. I know you're looking at your clock. I'm going to wrap up. But it also, no problem, I'm going to wrap up. But it also allows for a resident to be able to invest and then you have stability and you have that resident in that area and that neighborhood for years. And then their grandkids will come and their great-grandkids will come. It's an investment. So when you put up that property area number nine and you said, hold them out, would be able to purchase property and develop and make beautification areas, I think we should be given that, that opportunity all across the board. As you know, if you enjoy and if you really like what your eyes and your ear gates see, it leads to long-term health. Long-term health is long-term, good mental health as well. So with that being said, I'm just asking that you allow for residents to also have the opportunity to develop and build on land that they've put sweat equity into. And I've done that and I've been told that it's earmarked for developers. I put 12 years of sweat equity. I like to get the opportunity to buy all of the land. That's all I'm saying. Land is wealth. We've got generational wealth. Let's pass it on. This is a good plan. Have a great day.
Thank you. With that, that is all the public comments here. Are there any online at this moment? There are no public comments online at this moment. At that point, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Don't move.
Second. Have it moved by Commissioner Benton, second by Commissioner Bradley. Call for vote.
Previous roll.
Objection.
I hear an objection, the previous roll. Commissioner Boyd is on, so call for vote, please.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Benton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
Commissioner Weber?
Aye.
Judge Strather?
Aye.
And it passes without present voting, aye.
Thank you very much. With that, the public, the public hearing is closed at this time. So please understand at this point, you will, you will be hearing the comments and questions of the commission. As I know, we've been doing this online, so we've done this kind of in an orderly fashion. So I'll simply go through the list. First, I'll ask for questions from Alderman Boyd. If you have any, we'll entertain those now.
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Boyd. Commissioner Benton, any questions, of course?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to applaud everyone for coming out tonight. It's great to see the community come out and support the, the adaptation of the plan and hearing those impassioned pleas about why this is a great plan is really good to hear. I, I too think this is a great plan. Long plan, comprehensive plan. And, you know, there's certainly some, some true nuggets of information. One thing that just stood out to me at the top of my head, I mean, the city of St. Louis is known for its access to parks and neighborhood and seeing that there's so limited amount of current parks in the neighborhood was kind of shocking to me. So I think being able to implement some of these strategies for the addition of more green space in the neighborhood is, is really great. A couple of questions about implementation of the plan, if you, if you don't mind, Tim.
So one of the key implementation steps is the formation of a community development corporation for the area. Was any such organization identified as a possibility to take that role as part of this process?
At this point, there has been no, no organi, no lead organization identified to take on that role. The, the intent would be that through the, through the community process and through the, the development of the implementations during committee, that, that, that formation of that, of that CDC or CBO would be undertaken as, as part of, as part of that process, as part of the responsibility of that, of that group.
Is it your opinion that there are organizations that have that potential of capability right now or are you thinking that it would have to be from scratch?
So I'll, I'll, I'll answer that in, in, in two, in two parts. I think certainly there are organizations in and around the area that, that would have the, the capability and the capacity to do it. I think the broader question is, and one of the, one of the principles that we tend to believe in when it comes to community development corporations is that you really need, it really needs to be a local and, and neighborhood-based, and in this case, two neighborhood-based organization as opposed to a much larger organization that, that covers a much larger area. I think for the, particularly for the purposes of implementing a plan like this, that's very important because you need someone with those local, that local knowledge of the neighborhood, local connections to neighborhood stakeholders and, and a, and a, a very directed focus on a geographical area. Obviously, there's lots of ways that that can be done. We've seen it, you know, we've seen it done and, and there's lots of good examples throughout the city. I think institutional partnerships are important. I think there is certainly the opportunity for, for capacity building or utilizing capacity of existing organizations as a way of getting something started. But it would be our recommendation that ultimately having a, a locally, a locally-based organization that's dedicated to these two neighborhoods would be the, the, the best way of doing it.
Great. As you know, the, you know, the formation of the plan takes a lot of work and the implementation, implementation of a plan takes at least as much work, if not more work. And to that end, has there been discussions about the creation of a development review committee for the neighborhood? As we heard, you know, there's concerns about getting, vetting developers, making sure that development that does happen within the neighborhood follows the plan. Has that been talked about with the local alderpersons or the steering committee as part of this process?
So at, at this point, we have been engaged in some discussions with the Deaconess Foundation about taking, helping them to facilitate the formation of that implementation steering committee. And, and that is, and I can certainly, I don't want to speak on, on David's behalf if he would like to offer additional, additional thoughts on that. But the idea that through that, again, through that process, we, we've already through, through the planning process, gathered some, gathered feedback and, and interest from community members who would be interested in serving in various capacities on, on different, different sorts of implementation organizations moving forward. So again, forming probably a slate of, of different committees or task forces to deal with different aspects of implementation would be something that we would envision coming out of that process. And a development review committee would, would be a, a very important element of that.
Great, thank you. Final question, and this was something that just stood out to me. And not to say that necessarily they should be super involved, but one institution that, that I didn't see as signing off on, sort of endorsing the plan, was St. Louis University. I know in the past that, at least from my observations, they've sort of surprisingly neglected the area just north of their campus for a long time. And I'm wondering, was there any engagement with them to be more involved in the community? And if so, was it successful? Why or why not?
So there, there, there was specific outreach to, actually to both St. Louis University and although they're a smaller institution, but also an important institution, rank in technical college. And unfortunately, we were not able to really get any traction with, with engaging them in the, in the planning process. But we would certainly, you know, we, we certainly agree that they are really, both of those institutions are key resources, St. Louis University in particular. And we would, we would hope that as implementation moves forward, that there would be continued invitations and, and to them for engagement in the, in the process.
I, you know, they have vested interest in, in coming up with their 353 for their midtown area to, you know, enhance development in that area. I would, I would hope that they become more interested in what's happening directly north of their campus as well.
I, I do also know, and I, I think Cecilia could probably speak to this as well, but there, there is an organization with their law school that's, that's been active in, in establishing or, or helping communities to establish a neighborhood associations. And I believe that they have made some outreach to members of the community in the past as well, so.
Great, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. At this, I know their hands, unfortunately, the, the public hearing is closed, so all questions and comments have to come from the commission and by, by laws right now. At this point, I will call for Commissioner Boas, followed by Commissioner Bradley for any questions. Commissioner Boas?
I did want to ask, by any chance, did we miss Alderman Boyd?
No, he, no, he, he passed.
Oh, okay. I just didn't want to go ahead of him. Commissioner Benton is a hard act to follow because he asked a number of the questions I did. I definitely wanted to compliment the plan on a couple of issues. One, the incorporation of green space. I think that really is a way to re-envision the community to be better than it was originally, which I think is fantastic. I do have a question about what the expectation or the plan is for, for maintenance of those green spaces going forward. Are you picturing that as something that the city would do with additional funding through the adjacent development or what?
So the, the way in which it's been currently envisioned in the plan is that, that those, that it would be, it would be the responsibility of, of either private developers or, or community-based organizations or committees to, to maintain those over time. And that is, that is, it came out of fairly extensive engagement with, with some of the came out of fairly extensive engagement with, with some of the city departments, including forestry and parks. And concerns that, you know, there's, there's lack of capacity for, for the city to take on large amounts of additional maintenance activities. Of course, if that were to change in the future and the city had the, had the resources to participate in that, in that maintenance, that would certainly be welcome. But in terms of the way that the plan is conceived of today, it's, you know, these are really initiatives that, that would be driven by the, by the, the, the community and the local residents.
Got it. Thank you. Another question I know, I noticed it also mentioned the formation of a community land trust. I'm wondering if there's been any contact with LRA or SLDC, I guess I should say, about the new land trust that they are working to stand up.
At this point, we have not had specific conversations with either of those, those agencies or departments relative to the land trust.
I just want to encourage you to do that. Let's see, I think I had one more question. Oh, you, I guess Commissioner Benton already asked about the, the formation of the CDC or the C. And so I think you already answered that one. So thank you so much. It is a great plan and it is really, I'm sorry, I couldn't be there tonight, but it is pretty exciting to see how many residents have turned out for this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boaz. I'll be calling Commissioner Bradley, then following Commissioner Peoples. Commissioner Bradley, any questions at this time?
Just a couple of comments. No concerns, no questions. This plan has obviously taken two years to complete. There has been a tremendous amount of effort went into this. You can see by everyone who is in the room tonight on the screen, who has spoken, you're very passionate about this. And as a longtime city resident and employee myself, I am glad to see that. This is way overdue. It's an outstanding plan and I definitely support it and thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Peoples, any questions?
No questions. I just want to say I think that it's a very good plan and I too support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peoples. We'll call for Commissioner Goodman, followed by Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Goodman.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Weber, any comments or questions?
Just would like to reinforce what everyone else says. I support the plan. Lot of effort went into it and I hope that it gets implemented. No other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Weber. I'll call just to be sure. Is Commissioner Cone on? Not hearing Commissioner Cone, Commissioner Pfeffer, are you on? Hearing no calls, no questions, comments from either of those commissions. Let me first say thank you to those that have made the presentations. My first comment, Rev, you're right. The city needs hope. And this plan gives that community hope. And I, I'm looking forward to that. Ms. Murphy, I hope you're here for 20 years to see a plan. I hope you are here because this is a 20-year plan. Things do not happen overnight. There's a statement that says, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. This community is going together because you want to go far alone in this plan. I commend you on that. Also, those that talk about generational wealth, you have three elements in this plan. You talk about your, your equity, talk about wholeness, and talk about wealth. You can do that. You can do that. You're asset-based. This plan can do that. I typically don't speak as commissioner, as the chairman, because I don't want to influence the vote. Today is different. I support this plan. I see the work that's been put into it. The plan is a living heartbeat. Too many plans go up on the shelf, they collect dust and they, the dog ears plan, and they never happen. This plan, I can tell, has legs to it. I commend the community. I commend each of you that are taking part in it and thank you for your participation. Thank you for the, the support that you have on that. With that, I, there is a recommendation from the staff. I will call Alexa up to make that recommendation.
So I'll do a brief presentation, kind of just recapping everything. So as we know, Commissioners, now that we've seen the presentation and her public testimony, I will present Resolution PDA 16-21 to consider the North Central Vision Action Plan as a topical plan. As we are where, let me fix this. As we are where the North Central area encompasses the Vanda Vender and Covenant Blue Grand Center neighborhoods, the neighborhoods reside in the 4th, 18th, and the 19th wards. At our last planning commission meeting, a request for public hearing was approved and the public review and comment period was open from July 27th to August 17th. We did receive two comments, two written comments, which you have heard this evening during the public testimonial. Oh, okay. In the North Central Plan area, there's a mix of strategic land use designations. Neighborhood commercials exist along Dr. Martha Luther King Drive and in the northern portion of Grand Avenue. In the southern region of the Covenant Blue Grand Center neighborhood is primarily special to mixed-use area. And in Vanda Vender, you'll see that we'll have a mixture of neighborhood preservation and development area at its center. Next slide, please. So this is all the zoning designations within the plan area. We have that on North Grand and North Vanda Vender and also along Dr. MLK. And Delmar Boulevard exists G Local Commercial and Office District along with H Area Commercial District. In the residential areas in both neighborhoods, there's a mix of designations such as B2 Family District, C, D, and E Multi-Family Dwelling Districts. Next slide, please. Again, this is just an overview of the urban design focused areas within the plan. And there's a much more colorful version of this located in that document pages 76 and 77 in the draft plan. And as you can see, like areas like number seven build small residential parks as a framework for new infill housing. Next slide, please. So as you heard tonight, there have been previous planning efforts within the North Central Plan area. In 2000, for the North Central area, there was a plan created, but it kind of has slightly different boundaries than the ones we have today. And as we have heard, this plan wasn't adopted by the city. One of the developments that did come out of the plan was North Sarah, the North Sarah developments, which are pictured at the top left. In 2009, the Planning Commission also did approve the Greaterville Commercial Area Special Use District, which encompasses Dr. Martha Luther King Drive in the Vanda Venderville Greaterville neighborhood, which restricts, I was in junkyard operations and vehicular related car uses. Most recently, the Planning Commission approved a redevelopment plan for the Ville and Vanda Vender neighborhoods. And Florida Lee, Florida Lee was, was considered the master developer and will renovate and construct, construct new homes in this area. In terms of what portion of Vanda Vender is included, it's Pages to the south, North Newstead is to the west, Dr. Martha Luther King to the north, and Whittier Street to the east, which is part of the redevelopment plan. Next slide. All right. So Planning Commission members, we are here to consider the adoption of the North Central Vision Action Plan as a topical plan. You may choose to wait and take action at a subsequent meeting or take one of the three actions below or on the screen. Adopt, approve the topical plan, modify the topical plan, or reject the topical plan. And to summarize, PDA staff finds that the North Central Vision Action Plan is in conformity with the Strategic Land Use Plan. And we recommend that the North Central Vision Action Plan be adopted as a topical plan for the area following the adopted boundaries of the Vanda Vender and Covenant Blue Grand Center neighborhoods.
Thank you. You have heard the recommendations of the staff. Prior to call, I will read this statement. Unlike most planning commission actions, where the planning commission serves as an advisory board to the city's Board of Aldermen and the ultimate decision requires the approving, approving, approval of an ordinance by the Board of Aldermen, the authority to adopt a topical, topical plan rests solely with the planning commission. I wanted that to be read into record today. I will call for a vote on the recommended actions. Call for vote, please. Move, move for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission finds the North Central Vision Action Plan to be in conformity with the city's planned new plans and adopts the North Central Plan as a topical.
It has been moved by Commissioner Benton.
Oh, wait a second.
I have a second by Commissioner Boaz. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Benton. Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Judge Strather.
Aye.
And the motion passes without present voting aye.
Amen.
Congratulations.
We thank each and every one of you for your work. Now it's time to put some more feet to this plan. Don't fall asleep. No sleeping time to get work. You've got 220, 212 action items to get going. Now you've got 20 years to get it done, but let's start getting it done. With that, the committee does have more business. Our next item is being brought to us by Jonathan, a rezoning item. The plan, and let me say, the plan is online. For those that have not seen the full plan, can somebody tell us where they can see it?
The North, I don't have the website. The North Central Plan is, oh, I'm sorry. We have on the city's website, a, if you search for the adopted plans for the city, you'll find all the plans there.
So on the city website, you can find it, the plan?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. And good evening to all those in attendance here today. Thank you for welcoming the city into really your house and this wonderful building. Obviously, more development like this in the future. So, and you guys just adopted that topical plan, so it's very exciting still. Thank you all for being here this evening. I am Jonathan Roper, Senior Planner with the Planning and Urban Design Agency of the City of St. Louis. And the first item I have to present to you this evening is the, is the rezoning for, on Grand. It's a petition for a four parcel, 3.6.
Excuse me, one moment, please. If you want to have a conversation, I would ask that you step out to the hall, out to the hallway. Thank you very much.
It's 3.62 acres in the midtown neighborhood. It's in the 19th ward and it's also a part of the St. Louis Midtown 353 redevelopment area. And the proposed developer, Peer Property Group, wish, they're seeking to build a mixed-use residential and retail development on property that currently is Zone J Industrial and also dual zoning J and K. K being unrestricted and they're seeking to rezone that to H Area Commercial District. At the same time, there are two parcels and I, on the screen in the dotted red, there is a little slither that's about 11 feet wide and it runs along Grand. It's a, it's two vacant city on parcels that is, it's used by the city for maintenance of the Grand Bridge. Next slide, please. Show you the, some of the proposed site plan, some of the plans that are associated with this area and some of the renderings as well. This is the plan that you see today where we have, see the, in the brownish color, the floor plate of it. So it's around a 65,000 square foot of retail apartments above. Just hold this. There we, there we go. I, it's much better now. Sorry about that on the line. So retail on the ground floor, that is accessible from Grand. And there's parking from the borders of this property, which are Gratchit to the north, Grand to the west. To the south, there's the street called Pappen, but also beyond that, there's an alleyway that which is also called the Steel Coat Avenue. Next slide, please. Here are the renderings from the development. This is a view if you're on the southwest corner of the development, where you could see the retail on the bottom. The view is, that's Grand in front. So you would have a lovely view of the apartments from there. Next slide, please. And from the, the northwest corner of the site, you could see where the parking garage is, along with the retail again on the first floor and apartments above that. Next slide, please. Another plan in this development area is the Brick Line Greenway, which expresses the need to have more multimodal development for people and bikes and create pleasant avenues for people to connect to other areas around the city. And they have identified an interest on Grand Boulevard and also a little interest along Gratchit on the north side as well, the development. And the SLU, or I'm sorry, the St. Louis Midtown. Forgot I'm a mask. There we go. The SLU Midtown 353 Redevelopment Area. This plan, which is covered in what's called Action Area 4, calls for a mix of residential or an opportunity to redevelop for mixed-use development, including residential. And also it notes to create an enhanced physical and activity bridge between Interstate 64 and Chateau Avenue. Excellent, please. And we also looked at the Strategic Land Use Plan for the city. And this area is designated for opportunity area, which are those large areas that have opportunity that can go either residential, commercial, but they're really, there's opportunity involved in the area. However, it's usually not designated what that should be at the time, but for future development. Next slide, please. And the current zoning, which is why we're here, here today. The site is major, majority J Industrial District. And as you could also see at the top, on the darker gray on the top right side, the, one of the parcels is also duly zone K unrestricted area. And I also will note that the two parcels, the city-owned parcels along Grand are both Zone J Industrial. The zoning currently, two reasons why it's here. One is that for consolidation purposes of the lot, a, the zonings must be the same in order to consolidate. Also to note that in the J Industrial District, residential is not allowed. Therefore, a rezone to H Area Commercial, which would allow residential and the retail would be more appropriate for that. Here's the subject site aerial. As you could see, it's just a block north of the South Grand and Chateau Avenue. You also have the bridge and just to the north, the metro link and a little bit of more industrial apartments and retail surrounding that area as well. Now I will show you, give you a tour of the area and what the surrounding sites look like. We'll start with number one and we'll follow in a clockwise manner around the site. And the first is the view at the very, the most southwest corner of the site, which is currently green space. And that will be in the proposal, a surface parking for this development. Slide, please. This is immediately across the street to the west of the development, which is actually the Iron Hill PUD site, which is also a big opportunity area for the city as well. Third picture is from the Grand Bridge, kind of looking south and west, I'm sorry, east of the development from the bridge is what you'll see. Right, but below where this picture is taken is Gratchit as well. Next slide, please. And this is a view from if you are at the very northwest corner, which is on Gratchit. And you could see on the right side of the screen is where the city-owned parcels are, and that's the Grand Bridge there as well. And the current business that is being operated and they will vacate shortly this year is Ace Rentals. Next slide, please. This is a more of an area, aerial view of the site taken from the north looking west, I'm sorry, south and southwest. And you can see the Grand Bridge on the side. You could tell, next slide, please. A little bit of the grade difference there and highlighted in red. Highlighted in red is where that city-owned parcel is as well for maintenance and access. This is a view on Gratchit looking west. So you'd see the development really in a far, there is a few existing industrial businesses. So you'd see the development really in a far, there is a few existing industrial businesses surrounding the site. Slide, please. And finally, our view from Pappan Street, which at the, currently, this street has been vacated and is just a strip of grass. So in this process of this development, the developers are looking to actually reestablish the street connection there. The street will remain private, and there would be a new intersection that connects this side of Grand to the other side where we spoke about the Iron Hill PUD. Slide, please. And from, we received a letter from the zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator mentioned that the rezoning of the subject site would create additional retail services. It would allow for more residential opportunities, and would revitalize vacant and underutilized land. Staff finds that this rezoning would be in conformance with the SLU, which is designated for Opportunity Area, along with the Midtown Three, St. Louis Midtown Three Five Three Redevelopment Area, which calls for mixed-use residential and retail. Also, the note that the rezoning of the city parcels, which would be initiated, we're requesting that be initiated by the commission, would also be in conformity with the SLU and the St. Louis Midtown Three Five Three Redevelopment Area. And staff would recommend the commission to consider approval for this request.
All right, thank you for that. What I want to do, maybe to expedite a little time here. If a commissioner has a question online, would you use the, the reaction button and raise your hand? That way, I don't have to go through the entire list. And we'll stand just for a moment to see if there are any hands being raised at this point for questions. I am not seeing, I'm not seeing any hands from commissioners, am I correct? At this point, Commissioner Benton with any questions, please.
Do we have the developer with us tonight?
Yes, we do, on the line. Oh, and here we go.
And please identify yourself and your company, please.
Yes, Michael Hamburg with Peer Property Group. Thank you all for having me today.
Thank you for joining us. Overall, I think it's an exciting development. There's a lot of retail space as part of this sixty-five thousand square feet. Is that all for a single tenant, or are you looking at subdividing that space?
That is for a single tenant.
Any speculation on who that tenant is at this time?
I can't disclose it at this time, but we're getting close to being able to announce it.
All right, fair enough. Moving on to the site plan. Loving reconnecting Pappan Street. Love to see the city grid getting reconnected there. Not a big fan of surface parking lots in front of the building. Is there a reason that, at least, I can understand for maybe the lot south of Pappan Street, but for the little bit north of Pappan Street, that the building couldn't be projected out to the, to the zero lot line, and that parking either get added back into the garage area, or something else happened there?
Yeah, so a couple of things there. First, just to clarify, the garage below the building is all to service the residential units above. So that would be a private, you know, closed space, and the surface lot is all solely for the retail user. You know, on the question on immediately south of where the building currently sits, if the building could be extended. A couple of things there. First, you know, the retailer only, you know, required this amount of space. So that would kind of be dead space if we had to add space in the front of the building. And then the other aspect is a lot of that area is pedestrian crossings, as well as some curbside pickup areas, so it's not going to be necessarily, you know, conventional parking. It'll be a lot more in-and-out expedited service type of parking.
I guess what I'm suggesting is if the building does get moved forward, could that parking then be re-added to the back of the sort of building that way?
So yeah, difficult thing with shifting the building that way is just the terrain we're working with here. There's a pretty steep drop-off from Grand down to Gratchit. So we're kind of building into an existing hillside, and if we shifted the building south, we'd have to kind of take a jump out of that hillside.
I'm not, I'm not taking, talking about the whole building, just that first floor element getting extended out, not moving the entire building.
So if the first floor got extended out, that would just leave like an overhang on, on Gratchit, I guess, since you're, you're below.
Not, not on Gratchit, south to Pappan, is what I.
So you're just saying make the building bigger?
Making that retail element on the Pappan side, just that first floor, bump that out to Pappan Street. And then you'd have, I'd assume, more space in the garage behind that, right? And then re-adding that.
So that's, I mean, that whole floor is retail space, so if you shifted it forward, you would just have empty space on top of a garage, you know, on the north side where you shifted it from, I guess. If we were to make it larger, we don't have a user, you know, that, or a way to subdivide the space to be able to accommodate, you know, renting additional square footage. And then from kind of a pedestrian traffic perspective, you know, our goal is really to reconnect and open up Pappan and Grand, to eventually connect to the Iron Hill site that was just mentioned across the street, as well as just north-south pedestrian traffic along Grand. So I think if we push the building up right along Pappan, we would eliminate a lot of that pedestrian, you know, flow as well.
You're literally rebuilding the street, though, so you could build it however you want, that could be safe for pedestrians.
I guess, I mean, I don't, we're kind of reopening an existing street that just.
Moving on, parking in general, to residential parking. So you have about two hundred units, two hundred and fifty spots in the garage. That's just a ratio of about one and a quarter per unit, which suggests to me that you're not really optimistic about being that close to a, excuse me, transit station. You expect people will mostly still need to, need to park?
We do, yeah. I mean, just from what we've seen at other projects in this neighborhood and in surrounding areas. You know, we've developed forty-eight apartments in two buildings immediately east of this site, and have a hundred and five units under construction currently, kind of in between those two sites, as well as some other projects immediately west of here in the city. And we're still seeing, you know, one-to-one on parking ratios plus in some instances. You know, the other aspect of this is providing some flexibility for, you know, potential changes. If a loading dock needed to be a little bit larger, or something like that for, for the retail tenant. I could see some of those spaces eventually needing to get reduced, but this is kind of our maximum starting point.
All right, last question. On the Grand side of development, on the west facade, you have a big blank brick wall right at street level.
Yeah.
Can the administration be added to that?
I'm glad you asked that, and these elevations might not properly depict some of the conversations and what you might see in future renderings. But our goal and plan with that Grand West facade of the building on the lower band is actually to use some kind of metal paneling and make it some kind of local artist, be able to put a mural up, or some kind of local design for that. There's also an option that we might be adding a couple of storefront windows along that Grand facade as well for the retailer, which I think would just add to that kind of pedestrian landscape and feel as you walk down Grand.
Would you be able to, would you be willing to, that was a, a, a option of, or a amendment to getting the rezoning is to add some fenestration to that facade?
We are, we're planning on doing public art along that facades, along that facade, so yes, I don't, I don't think that would be an issue for us.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you for those questions, and unfortunately, unlike the next thing we'll see, which is like a development plan, and for rezoning, we really can't put conditions of like facade changes and stuff for rezoning, so. But it's good to discuss with them, but there's a limitation on what a rezoning. Uh, no.
It's a straight, you know, I want to speak into my throat. Mary, I don't know if you also want to speak to this, but it is a straight rezoning, so they would be using the underlying zoning, which is our zoning code. So because it's not tied to a development plan, like a planned unit development, there's no, we can't amend the zoning code for the specific development. So a PUD does have that ability, and we'll talk about the Veterans PUD, but this request is for a straight rezoning. And Mary, I don't know if you want to add anything else to that.
No, I'm sorry, I agree.
So we couldn't make the condition on the, on the Planning Commission approving the zoning request? I'm saying, that's a, any zoning of it, but in order to approve the zoning request, we can't put some conditions on it?
Correct.
And I would have the, I would have that conversation with the commission at, at another time, so we can have that clarity.
Absolutely.
Okay, at this point, I did not see any other questions from commissioners, am I correct at this point? No hands have gone up on the screen? With that, would you read the recommendation, please?
Recommendation that staff finds the, staff finds the proposed rezoning that would achieve three objectives, which would create additional retail services, allow new residential opportunities, revitalize the vacant and underutilized land. That the proposed rezoning is in conformity with the SLU's Opportunity Area, and also the St. Louis Midtown Three Five Three Redevelopment Plan. And also, the city-initiated parcels are also in conformity with the SLU Three Five Three Redevelopment Area and the SLU. And staff recommends approval of the rezoning.
Okay, with that recommendation, I would entertain a motion from a commissioner if there is one.
So moved, Commissioner Weber.
I have a second. It's been moved by Commissioner Weber, second by Commissioner Boyd, call for vote.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Benton. Commissioner Boaz.
Commissioner Boaz.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Jeff Strather.
Aye.
And the motion passes with six voting aye.
There is a note that Commissioner Boaz voted aye, not sure why her microphone was not working, it is in the written file.
Okay, so we have the motion passes with seven voting aye and one aye.
Thank you. The next item, Jonathan, is yours.
Mr. Chairman, before we go, let's start.
Recognizing Don Rowe.
Just to follow up on, on some of the discussion on the, and the last item, mainly addressing what Jake was bringing up. We'll make note of those comments and pass it along to the SLU Chapter Three Five Three, as they have some influence and clout on the line aspects of what goes on in the site. So just noted, and we'll pass that along.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. The next item for your consideration is the Veterans Community, I'm sorry, Veterans Community Projects Plan Unit Development, Development Plan. The item is for commission to review the conformity with the sketch plan of the PUD, and also the conditions of approval from the ordinance as well. And I will give you a little bit of a background of the process thus far. After the application was submitted for the Veterans Community Projects PUD Sketch Plan, it was reviewed and approved by the commission on May the fifth of this year. The HUDs Committee conducted a public hearing at the, I'm sorry, it was introduced to the Board of Aldermen, and the HUDs Committee conducted a public hearing on July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. And the Veterans Community Project Plan Unit Development was established officially by ordinance, the ordinance number seventy-one, three-six-seven, on July the fifteenth of this year. The PUD application for this development plan before today was submitted by the applicant on August the fourth. And tonight, the Planning Commission will review this development plan. And finally, if approved, the, outside of any outstanding city processes regarding lot consolidation or any other thing like that, they would be able to, be able to file for building permits. Next slide, please. And just looking back quickly on what the area is, as discussed during the sketch plan review on May the fifth. Here is the four-acre site that is about a block northwest of the intersection of Grand and Cass Avenue. The sketch plan included fifty tiny homes, one community center for the, that will serve the residents of the, the veterans community, and also an outreach center which would serve veterans at, at large in St. Louis. This project is also in the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood. And next slide, please. And the zoning for this site, it was C Multi Family Dwelling District and H Commercial District along Grand. Next slide, please. And the Strategic Land Use Plan of the City of St. Louis has this designated as also a neighborhood development area, and the neighborhood commercial area along the Grand Parcels. Next slide, please. And the Jeff Vanderloo Plan, this area is covered, and it's highlighted on your screen for you in black. And it also calls for residential and commercial in this area as well. And here's an aerial of the photo, of the, of the area. And I'm going to, next slide, please, give you a tour, a quick tour of the site, starting with number one, and looking just around the areas around the site. And this is a view from Grand, looking at the site. Actually, just behind this building is where the community center along Grand, the outreach center along Grand will be, and the development will be behind this. Next slide, please. This is a view from the south at the intersection of Spring and Cass, where the development, you'll see, go up this street here. This is a view from the west, the very west end of the site, where there will be a few existing homes that will remain on the left side, but on the right side and further down will be the development. And this is a view from, in the middle of the development, at the intersection of Alding and Spring, where this view is looking west, where you could see the existing homes that'll stay on the right side, but also the vacant area, there will be the tiny home, the tiny homes for the development, and also the community center. Slide, please. And review of the approved, here's the, here is the approved sketch plan by the commission, which includes, again, the fifteen tiny homes, the three parking lots, and the two outreach community building and the outreach center. Slide, please. And now we're going to take a look into the, what was submitted for the development plan. And this is the, just for the sake of having, because it spans two different blocks, so we'll start with one block and go to the next block. So this block, Alding is, I'm sorry, Spring is the north and south street that runs from the top to the bottom here. So this is the western side of the development, next slide, where you could see the, there's about fourteen homes that'll be on this side, and one more click. Along with the, in the gray outline and red, that's the parking, surface parking, and the outreach building. Next slide, please. And this is the eastern area, just east of North Spring, where we have, next slide, the remaining tiny homes, as well as, next slide, the two surface parking lots in gray, and that gray-brown slash blue outline is where, that's just off Grand there. So that would actually be the outreach center. Slide, please. Also in this, and also the supplemental requirements for a PUD is also a landscape plan, and this is what they're proposing to do with the landscaping, where they have street trees in the right of way. And also, some landscaping on-site. The, the circles that you see are the trees that are a village green zelkova, which is also expressed in the Jeff Vanderloo Neighborhood Plan as the trees, one of the tree options to use. And also, in the, the more linear, linear green areas are the more like shrubs that are also expressed in the Jeff Vanderloo, Jeff Vanderloo Neighborhood Plan. Next slide, please. Also, there's a fence plan, and this was also a condition of approval about having a fence that was more in line with what the desires are in the Jeff Vanderloo Plan, where their fence, which is highlighted in the orange on the screen, will go around parts of the site. which is highlighted in the orange on the screen, will go around parts of the site. And we found that the fence would be in conformance with that as well. Next slide, please. We're going to quickly look at the building placements of the outreach center and community center. The Jeff Vanderloo Plan notes to try to have a, a long grand building presence and to shield a little bit of parking or have it more in the back. And on both of these buildings, they have the buildings up to the street and that parking is more secondary view from at least Grand at this point. Next slide, please. This, and I will take you to a few views of the, first, the community outreach building on Grand and then secondly, the, the community center for the village. This is a view from, looking, if you're looking at, on, from Grand. This is a view, if you were standing and follow along with that blue arrow which would show which way we're looking. So this is the backside of the building which is a view from the parking lot. Slide. This is a view from, excuse me, the intersection of Grand and Alding. Slide. And this is a view that would probably be seen less because there is a fence and an alley and it shares a, well, there was an alley there, but this is the south side of the community outreach building. Next slide. This view is the community center building, view from the east. And here's the view from the west or the parking lot of, well, the parking lot of the community center. Slide. This view is the north view, what you would see from Alding and, next slide. And this are, there are actually two different views because the building is kind of slanted in a way where, but you have both views from the southeast and southwest corners. Slide. And at this point, you've seen the two buildings that they're proposing and we're going to look at the actual tiny homes and what the proposed building façades are going to look like. So there are a number, several different types of buildings that they have. And if you can go through the next slide, please. I'm just going to run through some and just show you some of the fronts of the buildings. So this is one of the Patriots, next slide. Puller, you could just kind of keep looking along. Yeah, so there's four fronts here, you notice the brick on the bottoms, the overhang on the porch, some of the trim on the windows. Here's the side where e- each home, tiny home has a window on at least one of the sides, actually only on one of the sides purposely through their design to do about how to mimic a area that is more safe and secure, but also more private. And of course, the developer is here this evening to speak with you about that as well. But these are the signs of the tiny homes. And you get, notice the overhang from the roof as well. Next slide. And next slide. And you notice the brick columns as well for the porches and next slide. And here's the opposite side, you can go, click through about three of these. The sides that are basically the blank sides, so each tiny home window on one side would actually face this wall to keep more privacy on there. Next slide, please. And this is the, pay attention a little bit to the rear of the buildings because we will talk about this a little bit more soon. Most of the rear of the buildings are just all one wall. Just lap sighting and you can keep going through these and there's another one there. All right. And so we've seen the development plan, we've seen the sketch plan. We have seen the buildings and the façades that they have. And at this point, I'm going to walk us through what those conditions were for that PUD on this. And that is compliance with the design elements expressed in a Jeff Vanderloo Plan. And that more maintain, pertains to the tiny homes. There's also compliance with the fence and the screening standards expressed in the Jeff Vanderloo Plan and compliance with the open space. Next slide, please. And looking at the, and looking at the expressed desire in the Jeff Vanderloo Plan, this talks about, it recognizes that we want to engage a community that is well, it's faithful to the styles of the existing neighborhood. Next slide, please. And so the Jeff Vanderloo Plan gives different examples of what, what new housing should look like. And so on the left of the screen here, you see the proposed tiny homes renderings and on the right, you see what's in the Jeff Vanderloo Plan. There are different similarities to this such as the expression of a porch, the brick material and even the overhang where the roof where it has different brackets. So in the top left, the Patriot, I'm sorry, the Monroe, they both have some type of gable that has a little bit more design to it that. Next slide, please. The development, or one of the things that we wanted to highlight though is that the, the development is facing inwards. So all the nice views that we just saw for the housing is actually facing where the yellow is. So that leaves the street with that rear blank wall for the house. And going back to the Jeff Vanderloo Plan, we were looking at the intent of having the architectural elements as expressed, which we clearly did see more of those expressed on the front side of the house. But if we're walking on Alding or Spring, you would definitely see the rears would, would be less, that would be, it's a rear facing the street, so that's where staff is bringing to your attention and would like to have a little bit more further discussion about that. However, there, we did look at it as this is a PUD, a Plan Unit Development. There are items that does not comply with traditional zoning, therefore PUD was established. And we look at the kind of two methods on looking at this liberal interpretation or conservative interpretation of the element of the design facing the street. Definitely, from a conservative point of view and looking at the little text of this, the design of a rear that is flat facing the street literally would not address what's in a Jeff Vanderloo Plan. However, in looking at this, liberally speaking, how is the street being addressed at this time and as you're on the streets, you know, what does that feel? That brings you into the neighborhood, they are adding the trees in the right of way along with, if you notice where any of those long green areas are, is where more intentional landscaping is going to be. So you're not truly getting a, the back of a building from the street, but you also have some landscaping, intentional landscaping between there. Next slide, please. And this will highlight that exactly where you have the yellow in the middle where that's where, you know, the front porch has come out to and where those beautiful designs are. But on the other side of that, you do see the rear of the buildings, but you have the landscape there. Next slide, please. So staff looked to, and these are in your reports as well, consider alternatives about what could be done on those rear facing sides that face the street. And we looked at having like some type of fake window that makes an appearance of a little bit more design or even material changes in that second center picture there. You could see lap sighting and then above it, single shake siding. At the top, there's also ornamental roof brackets at the top that come off that you've seen on the front of some of these tiny homes. So are there things that could be incorporated in this tiny home design? And that's what we asked the commission to consider. Next slide, please. In looking at the conformity with the other condition about the fence and the screening, we find that the fence which is on the proposed fence on the left is, does appear to conform with the other fences expressed in Jeff Vanderloo Neighborhood Plan. Next slide, please. And at this time, that's the end of the presentation. Staff would recommend approval for the development plan. We asked that if the commission, regarding the rear of the homes facing the street and the blank facade, please discuss that. The petitioner is here this evening, Mr. Mc, Adam McBride. And that there is a condition that this commission so chooses to add some type of design element to the street facing façades of the home. Also, I will note after the commission, at this point, this will be the final approval. So they're free to build, there's no more, you know, if you go back to the Board of Aldermen for this. So this will be the approval that will get them started building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What I'm going to do again for, for a modest of time, for management of time, I first want to acknowledge I did see Alder Woman on the line. Marlene Davis is on the line, I'll give her an opportunity if she'd like to acknowledge that. I am going to ask the developer not to give any, any project issues or simply to answer any questions that come up from the commission if there are any. Alder Woman Davis, welcome and we welcome any comments that you may have now.
Thank you Commissioner and thank you to the members of the planning commission and to all staff who have been a part of this process. I have been informed all along the way about the concern. I took a lot of time and most of you know that I've been a part of a lot of development in this region, not just in this city. And was a part of the plan, the Jeff Vanderloo Plan, actually co-president of it. So in this particular development, we do know that we have some extenuating circumstances that require something a little bit different. I am willing to, and I'm sure that I can speak for the other two Alder persons who have boundaries within this project area that I will supply even more funds to have additional greenery there to truly enhance the streetscape so that it would take away from the absence of that window. I, I personally think it would not be that attractive to have a fake window. And I think that based on the occupants there, the reasons why this is being done for privacy and a number of other reasons that we should probably give some leeway and consideration to this. And I will stay online in case anyone has any questions directly from me. Thank you.
Thank you Alder Woman Davis, welcome again. At this point, I will entertain questions from the commissioners. I'll simply ask, we'll go down the line because I believe there are some. Commissioner Alderman Boyd, any questions?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman, I've made some comments because I have to at the site along with my colleagues and someone who is a veteran. I appreciate a lot of the thought that has been given to this project and this location. Certainly no development is perfect, but when you look at the opportunities for veterans to truly be serviced at that particular location, it's, it, it's just the optimal location to be in with, with the, the hospital down the street with the bus route with just the amenities in that particular community. It's, you don't really need a car to, to, to gain the services and utilize the services that we afforded to veterans. So I'm excited about the project and, and, but I am also sensitive to any particular issues that residents may have. And so if there's a way that we can make it better, I certainly support that. It's not my word, but again, being a veteran, I can appreciate what's been offered to veterans. There are a lot of homeless veterans out there that are in need and some of them want to come in from out. And this provides, I think, a very safe place where they can get the social services and all the wraparound services that they need and they pay to reserve. So just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Boyd, Commissioner Benton.
Good evening, thank you for being here. One big change that I saw from the original plan we saw is that in the previous plan, the streets were closed or diverted and this plan, they seem to be reopened. Is that correct?
The part of this is under the purview of the St., City of St. Louis and they are still working on what that final plan is going to be. So there's not going to be, to my understanding, any private streets or full street closures. But there might be a few other improvements along the lines that would be more comfortable or encouraging for the development. Maybe, but, oh, yeah, perfect. Oh.
Good evening Commissioners, just stepping out from behind the Zoom meeting. My normal, my normal, my normal role in the planning department is working on some of these transportation related issues. And so the applicant has been working with, with ourselves, but also with the Board of Public Service on that plan for the existing right of way. There is a plan to divert those streets, but we've recommended they not be street vacations, that it remains public right of way. We're working to make sure that the design includes emergency vehicle access and deliveries. So those streets will remain public streets just with some access modifications is, is the current thinking. Does that answer?
It does, that does, thank you. And I liked to hear that. Thanks. In terms of the units themselves, are all or any of these units ADA accessible?
I would add that order to the petitioner at this time.
At least a percentage of them.
Yeah, my name is Adam McBride, Executive Director, Veterans Community Project, St. Louis. Appreciate your time tonight. So they are able to be. So right out of the box, as far as some of the oversized wheelchairs and things of that nature, we could and have the space to make some modifications or the lip on the basin for the standup shower. Those modifications can be made for one of our veterans that requires that level of, you know, change. But right out of the box, they won't until it's needed and then they are, they're easy changes to make.
Got it, okay, thank you. And then in terms of the site plan, I think I had this question last time, but the, the paths themselves in between the development, what is the material? Are those concrete sidewalks, pathways?
Yeah, so it's, it's essentially directional on the north and the south, running east and west with areas in between for whether it be native grasses or the local Rotary Club wants to plant flower garden. So they're, they're sort of able to be modified, but there is green space in between the, the passages.
And in addition to the internal paths, are there, are there still sidewalks sort of surrounding the block as well along the street?
That's correct.
Okay. Very good. All right, let's talk about the, the tiny houses themselves. So the concern is, is that this is a internal facing development and that these sort of back, back blank walls are, are facing the street, which is not good for sort of eyes on the street. Neighborhood safety principle. So there, you didn't include a floor plan of the actual homes, at least I don't have one in my, my packet. But is there a reason that there couldn't be a window added to the backside of the house, a real window?
Sure, no, that's a great question. So the way the homes are individually designed, I think maybe we touched upon this briefly at the original meeting. So the houses are designed with post-traumatic stress or other mental health issues in mind, which is why you see one entry and exit point, which is why you see windows on only one wall. It's not that we hate natural light, it's because that windowed wall will always face, I think as Jonathan had noted before, the non-windowed wall. Particularly windows, especially for veterans that have come back from war in an urban environment, windows can be a real trigger and it can be a real cause for a lack of feeling safe. And so it, it's not perfect, but the houses were designed with those needs in mind where I can take someone like me that doesn't suffer from that, I'm going to live in the house just fine. But for somebody who has some of those triggers, it's extremely important that we kind of incorporated what we could. And so when it comes down to it, that's, that's why the windows are placed where they are. That's why the bed is in the rear with the pillow in the corner with. That's why the bed is in the rear with the pillow in the corner with no windows near the head of the bed. Like all those elements within the way that house is developed is programmatic in nature.
It's a good answer.
If I answer.
All right, so. Just to continue that, that conversation though, so. Is that, there's a similar development that this is based off of in Kansas City, correct?
That's correct.
And that this is sort of similar design to those existing, that existing project in Kansas City?
This, this is designed based on a blueprint that has been operational since 2018 in Kansas City, Missouri.
Okay, well, it, it's certainly a unique development with unique challenges and I recognize and appreciate that. I. I can see both sides where, you know, having a bunch of blank walls lining the street is not the most ideal in terms of an urban planning. Urban planning ideal, but at the same time, unique development with unique challenges. And, you know, it's unlike anything that's currently within the city already and will, I think inherently feel like an internal and private development, especially with the landscaping and fencing. So. It doesn't bother me too terribly much. It bothers me a little bit, but not enough for me to say necessarily need to make some radical changes. In terms of the materials though. I, oh yeah, there we go. That's perfect. So they are going to be different colors, so there'll at least be some variation among the.
You've got some different roof lines, same interior setup. The only difference is forty of them will be about roughly 240 square feet. There are single or single occupant units. The remaining ten are designed for a veteran who comes to stay with us to be able to reunite with their children, whether it's on a visitation basis or for them to be permanently housed together. So other than those changes, there's three different roof lines. And believe it or not, each one of those colors you see represented represents one of the five branches of service. Yeah. It's kind of.
One thing that did just pop into my head though, is there any consideration of adding a like mounted buffer in between the back of the homes and the street as a way to give some height? So maybe that can block a little bit more of the blank wall with landscaping. I don't know how much site work you're doing and if there's going to be excess.
A lot.
That you're trying to remove and put somewhere, but perhaps you could create some berms almost to help insulate some, some.
We're open and really when we sort of sat down and talked through, that's what sort of the additional landscaping and sort of that medium height vegetation, if you will, that was sort of adopted into the plan sort of later in the process was to help with some of the concerns about sort of like the view from the street, if you will. So that, that's sort of the direction we tried to go. Thought it would make the sidewalks themselves and the street area look really nice and be really green along with the trees. But it also had sort of the ability to maybe mask a good portion of what it is that, that I think some are a little nervous about optically what it might look like. And so that, that's why we included that. And I hope to bridge, because to be perfectly honest with you, some of the design developments on the rear, it really just came down to how we're funded and it came down to how we gain a majority of the funds that we use to help and we will use to help struggling area veterans or homeless veterans in the metropolitan area. And it's, it gets really hard to sort of advocate for something that has no function other than, I don't take that the wrong way. You understand what I'm saying? No real programmatic function. It became difficult to sort of rationalize that internally.
Great. Last question. Site lighting, is there any additional site lighting internal to the development in terms of light poles, pedestrian lighting? And then also along the street, what's that look like?
Should be in the plan. There is internal site lighting that should be built into that plan that you have before you.
Yeah, the copy machine sort of ran ink on mine, I guess, but.
The, if you could see between, so there's really two sources of lighting. If you could see between the green circles between the trees, there is actually a light pole in some of those different areas. And some of those lights are in the darker, the darker shaded circles that you see. Yes, some of those darker shaded circles are indicating as lights. Also, each of the homes, actually I believe has a light on the front of it as well. So the internal is lit up by the actual houses themselves, the porch lights, and there would be streetlights as well.
Thank you. We are already running over, we're two hours beyond at this point, two hours and fifteen, twenty minutes. I want to continue. If any other commissioner has questions, please use the, the reaction button at this time on your screen to raise your hand. I do see Tracy Boaz, please acknowledge Commissioner Boaz.
I'm sorry, first, great project, really great to see and developing. This is a little beyond the purview of the planning commission. If you're interested in, and it's not too late for any input on your landscaping choices, please have planning staff connect me to you for my day job as at a state agency. And planning commission staff or planning staff, if you could let me know where the plant list that is driving this is located, we would love to help update that too.
And I just need a quick sidebar real quick, just to ask one question. Never mind, so we're good.
Okay, Commissioner Bradley, I believe you raised your hand.
Yeah, just real quick, heard both the aldermen, heard all the questions. This is a very unique project. So we have to look at this with a little bit of a tainted eye because it is a first for us. It's a great project and I think we need to embrace this and hopefully this project will continue to grow. As Alderman Boyd said, it couldn't be in a better location. So real excited about it. Think it's a great project. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. I am reviewing, I'm not seeing any other hands, am I correct? I am correct to that point. With that, would you go over a recommendation, please?
The recommendation is to find that, that PD, he staff recommends approval of the development plan. There was a condition about the architectural interest, but please note that from what I'm hearing that most of the commissioners want to skip the architectural interest condition. So it'd be that PD staff recommends approval of the development plan as is.
All right, I will enter.
Without the condition.
I will entertain the motion at this time.
So moved.
Commissioner Bradley has motioned.
Second.
It had been moved by Commissioner Bradley, seconded by Commissioner Banton with that call for vote.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Boyd. Commissioner Banton. Commissioner. Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
And you did, Commissioner Boyd's votes.
I do. And the motion passes without present voting on.
Thank you for your eyes and votes and this one moves forward. Again, thank you, Alderwoman Davis, for your support and participation in this project. The next item, we'll, we'll give it all to Cecilia, who will, is an informational item.
Thank you, yes, and I promise to be quick. To move to the next item, thank you. So I just kind of wanted to bring to your attention, there was one extra item in your packets. I apologize for the need to use, you know, maybe a magnifying glass. For those of you who are interested in getting a kitchen table sized printed version, please let me know. I'm happy to do that. I just kind of wanted to bring this to your attention. We have developed internally and worked with the mayor's office as well to develop this neighborhood planning process. This just helps, if you go to the next slide, provides some guidance for the neighborhood in understanding what the neighborhood planning process is going to look like from start to finish. Go to the next slide. It provides some information about what the deliverables will be, what types of engagement they can expect and the different phases as well. We've also built in a number of feedback loops, which will, you know, provide an opportunity for neighborhood planning committees to review any deliverables. And if at some point either it doesn't meet the neighborhood's sort of desired outcome of engagement or they feel that there's some elements missing in the deliverables, we would have an opportunity to sort of go back to the neighborhood or have some working conversations to address those issues. So we just want to make sure that those feedback loops are incorporated throughout the process. We also, at the top, I'm pointing out here on the screen, have some communication strategies. So, you know, for residents, we want to make sure that we're updating websites, attending neighborhood meetings, just making sure that we're informing people about the process along the way. We also want to bring this to you guys. So after each phase, we would just provide you just like this, an informational item to just update you on how the processes are going, what engagement is looking like and just kind of keep you guys going along the way so that when it comes time to consider adoption, we're not trying to feed you, you know, all of the process all at once as to how it went. If you go to the next slide. Overall, it's a, it is a nine phased process from introductions to implementation. The one thing I would point out is that we do have a good amount of time at the front end that is dedicated to building trust with the neighborhoods. It's something that, you know, we heard throughout a lot of our engagements so far that is highly needed. And, you know, we really want to make sure that we can bring people to the table to develop these plans with them. So we would not be, we would hire a community engagement consultant on the front end to help with the initial phases, but we wouldn't be hiring consultants to do any of the recommendations or anything like that until we're actually in phase four. So it was built like that intentionally and we're excited. We've gotten a lot of really great feedback. If you go to the next slide. So just to kind of summarize, we would love to do any working sessions with planning commissioners who would be interested in diving in a little bit deeper with this. So Michelle will be sending out an email in the next few days just to gather the people who would be interested in that, you know, to go through this. And then at the next planning commission meeting, we will also give you an update on the strategy. Over the last couple of months, we have been out in the community, going to neighborhood meetings and, you know, community organizations who gather neighborhood folks just to gather some feedback on the strategy and how we're going to deploy this to make sure that everyone's excited and that they have a way to inform the process as well. I would note that we're always open to pivoting. So at some point, if, you know, we do get feedback that something isn't working or that something else needs to be added, we would be happy to do that as well. But we wanted to get some initial feedback before we launched. So we'll bring that to you at the next planning commission meeting, just to summarize the feedback that we got. Take a new look at the, the neighborhood planning clusters and, and just kind of keep you informed as we go. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer now or offline, however you prefer.
Thank you. I will simply say after looking at the nine steps, I found one square that said party. It's like, sometimes I just, I looked through this and Jake and I both kind of laughed when we saw this. Thank you for putting it together. I know putting something like this step by step is a lot of work and I know your team is doing that. With that, we look forward to the further steps in that. No other questions from me, any questions from commissioners at this point? I am seeing no hands raised at this moment. Look forward toward the email to come from Michelle, asking those that want to engage and volunteer to do so. And you're more than welcome to do that and we thank your team for that. So with that, you have entertained a very long and intense meeting outside. First went out, we did two and a half, don't let us out the building anymore. With that, I will entertain a motion to close the meeting, adjourn.
So moved.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Banton, seconded by Boyd. With that, the meeting is adjourned and closed for this day. Thank you all and everyone for your help.